Well, at being 6:30, I want to call the meeting of the Ashland zoning board of adjustment to order with a roll call vote. Charlie Bazelo.
Is present.
Martine Badger.
Present.
Dave Toth, present. Before we begin the meeting, I want to appoint Alan Silly alternate as a voting member of the board for this meeting. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, the governor has issued emergency order number 12 that waives a location requirement of public officials for public meetings. This meeting will be conducted electronically through our Zoom connection as listed in our agenda posting. The meeting is being recorded and will be available on PVTV YouTube link on the town hall website. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of August 13?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I have to do it by roll call vote. Charlie Bazelo.
Aye.
Martine Badger.
Aye.
Dave Toth, aye. Tonight, we're going-
And Alan.
Oh, yes, Alan. Sorry, Alan.
No, no, that's okay, Dave. Obviously, I'm going to abstain from not being at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, tonight, we're going to review beginning consideration of case 2020-01, which is an application for a special exception for proposed gravel pit and quarry on an 89.19 acre property owned by Center State LLC. Tax map lot number 004-002-002, which is located on the end of West Street in the rural residential zone. For our meeting tonight, the first order of business is going to be to determine whether the proposed project has a regional impact beyond Ashland and requires additional notifications as outlined in RSA 36:54 through 58. And the second order of business will be to determine where the application meets submission requirements for the ZBA to vote the application as complete. I think it's important, I don't know, I don't know that there are any other people-
Not yet.
-checked in at the meeting so far, but for anyone who's listening, the public hearing on this case will not be heard tonight. It's scheduled for Thursday, November 12, 2020, at 6:30 PM and will be accessible electronically via Zoom. The information on that meeting will be posted on the Ashland Town website. The first order is to determine whether or not the project has a regional impact. According to RSA 36:56, development of regional impact means any proposal before a local land use board, which in the determination of that board, could reasonably be expected to impact on a neighboring municipality. The RSA suggests that some key factors suggest some key factors that we need to look at. And our Lakes Region Planning Commission has created checklist to use in determining the regional impact.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, Martine is putting that up on the screen right now.
Go down to, okay, here's the section from the RSA. And then I have the other section. Which do you want to go to, David?
I'd like to use the checklist. I think it's a little easier to do. And what I'd like to do is go down through each of the items and entertain discussion from the board about which of those items may have a regional impact. The first one is school impacts.
I don't think there will be any.
I don't think so either. Second one is traffic generation. Will the development cause an increase in traffic that will diminish the capacity or safety of the road system in the adjacent municipality or potentially affect regional traffic patterns?
That doesn't seem likely. I mean, it's all on the east side of Interstate 93, is that correct? From what I reviewed, the access will be through West Street.
That's correct.
Right. It may, since it does exit on, and West Street does come on to Route 3, Route 25, which is a state highway, which does have access to 93, I would say there might be a possibility. I can't say for sure.
Yeah, at best, it would be indirect. I mean, I don't see, you know, that traffic being a problem for anybody else. I think our consideration is, you know, we will have an impact on West Street. I'd like to know more about that, but I don't see that being regional.
Okay.
Alan, any comments?
Yes, even at minimal increase, it will definitely increase traffic flow in that area.
Well, the question is, is it going to affect regional traffic patterns?
I know there's been a lot of traffic studies done in that area, obviously, over the years. Without maybe looking at some of that information, I don't want to guess, but I'm just going to make the assumption that there would be some increased traffic flow, Route 3 and
I would agree with that, and maybe that's something we should, we should look at. I think it's important, it's going to be important to look at the traffic pattern, the traffic studies that we have there anyway. So let's keep that one in mind. Will the proposed buildings or number of dwelling units impact neighborhood or areas in neighboring municipality? I don't see that as-
I don't, I don't see that.
Agree.
Visual impacts. Will the development create visual impacts to neighboring municipalities such as light pollution, glare, visibility of structure, adverse impact on scenic vistas?
Maybe depending on location in relation to 93. That's, that's, that's not a, not a definite at this point.
Right. Is it something that can be seen from across the river?
Don't, I don't know.
Yeah, they're going to have to explain that a little better. I mean, from the documents they submitted, it seems that that's a large piece of property, and they'll be using a piece kind of central, that's what it looks like, but I think we need a little more information on that in terms of how you access that site and how big the site will be. I guess I didn't, I didn't see a whole lot of detail on that.
No, there's not, there's not a lot of detail on it. So that's definitely something that we can, we can think about. Pollution, does the development propose, of the proposed operation facility or business that would generate excessive air pollution, wastewater discharge, noise or hazardous waste, transport?
Could possibly, could possibly deal with some noise.
Air pollution is a potential issue if they're going to be cracking rocks, making dust.
So I would say yes on that one.
Can you scroll up on that, Martine?
Yes. There we go.
Surface or groundwater impacts, will development occur on or adjacent to known aquifers or surface waters that transcend municipal boundaries? I would say yes to that one.
Yes.
Protected watershed shed area?
We, the local aquifer, which actually goes in, serves several communities, is partially on this piece of land, and the northern end, and on the southern end of this lot is part of our wellhead protection area. So I would say definitely yes.
Do you have the map for that, Martine?
I will. Let me see if I can, okay. See how I do with more than one here. I think this is it. Okay, there we go. Okay. The lot in question, if you can see my cursor here, the lot in question is right here. I'm outlining it right now.
Okay.
To the east of Interstate 93. And this red area, this red outlined area that overlaps the lower part of the lot is part of our wellhead protection area, which is addressed in a particular section of our zoning ordinance. And the, throughout this whole area, there's a, let's see if I can enlarge it a little bit here. Okay. Whoops. Okay. All of this shaded area, it's actually a very light blue shaded dotted area, comes all the way down here, over to here, and up into here. That is the aquifer, which serves our area and some other municipalities north and south of us and across the river. It is actually one of the larger aquifers in the state. So that is on the northern end of the lot, and the wellhead protection area overlaps the southern end of the lot.
The aquifer itself goes into Bridgewater?
Yes, Bridgewater is directly across the river. North, north of us is Plymouth, just south of us is New Hampton.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to, is that all right? I'll close that one now.
Right, yeah. So I think the answer to that question is yes.
I would say yes.
I would agree.
Can you scroll up again, Martine?
Okay, there's another question here.
Oh.
Yep.
Will the development require major impact wetland permit from NHDES?
That I don't know at this point. I'm not sure. That will be something that will be determined through contact, through surveying and contact with the DES.
Does the project involve permitting for a large groundwater withdrawal? I would say no, but-
Probably not.
Yeah, I'd want to hear that directly. I mean, these types of rock mining operations, I mean, sometimes they use water in the process.
So that will be a question to ask later, yes.
Right. Number seven, conservation lands. Does the development apply to existing conservation lands or existing farmland such that coordination between municipalities could lead to the creation or preservation of greenways, wildlife habitat areas, or prevent fragmentation of forests, farms, or other conservation lands?
Okay, I'm going to bring up that same map I just had up with the, only because, let's see if I, when we look at the abutters, and now I'm not sure exactly which one, they're just to the east of this lot, there is the large Witten Woods area, which is a conservation area of, I believe it's almost over 500 acres. There is also a private held land of March Gliddons that is under conservation easement. So those two very large tracts of land are just to the east of this, are direct abutters to this property.
So the answer to that question would also be yes?
Yes, I would say yes.
Economic impacts, does the development propose the creation of business or industry that would significantly impact economic, regional, or regional economic development?
I don't know on that. There are other sand pits, gravel pits, quarries, excavation areas in various places around our area, whether this one will have a significant impact in regional economics, I'm not sure.
Emergency response, does the proposal create significant increased demand for emergency services response from neighboring municipalities, including mutual aid?
Well, obviously, if there were a major incident, accident, or some emergency there, all of the towns in this area do assist each other. Again, whether it will be a significant increase, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think the word significant there is important. I mean, you can have an emergency anywhere, but I don't think it's something they're going to be planning for.
I would imagine it would involve some, some planning on the part of our fire chief because of the need to get emergency vehicles in and out of there on, on, on the roads. So again, significant demand, I, it's probably not going to be significant.
I think we'll need to know more about the, the access roads that they plan to prepare for, to support this process. And I think that would probably be the discussion sufficient to answer this question.
And I would agree to that and the questions put forth. It's going to be, I won't say a large access to the backside of that property, but it will be more than adequate for emergency vehicles, in my opinion.
Historic or cultural resources, will a proposed development have negative impacts on historic or cultural resources that may have significance regionally?
I don't know of any.
I don't either.
I will just throw this out, that in that whole region along the Pemmy there, there have been found numerous burial sites of Indians of, you know, that have frequented that area in the past. But to find one probably that high up or that far away from the river, it would be probably not happening.
Are there any other regional impacts that any of us know about?
I would say, well, we've, we've definitely identified pollution, surface and groundwater impact, and conservation lands. We've definitely identified those three as significant. There are some other, couple others that we are probably, we'll get more information on as far as traffic and visual impact and so on, but I would say we've, I would say we've identified three definites.
So is the consensus of the board that there is a regional impact? Or there are regional impacts we need to consider?
Yes.
Could be considered.
Yes.
I agree.
Definitely. Do you want a motion on that right now, or do we want to combine that with, because the next thing we have to do is identify which municipalities? Do we want to keep those two motions separate?
I believe they should be separate.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the zoning board has determined there that this project will have regional impact, especially in the areas of pollution, surface and groundwater, and conservation land, with a few other areas of possible additional exploration.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Charlie Bazelo.
Aye.
Martine Badger.
Aye.
Alan Silly.
Aye.
And Dave Toth says aye. Which municipalities should we notify?
I'm going to close this piece and bring up, this just gives us an idea of where we are. That red dot is very roughly where the project would be, and other, and other towns around.
Well, we've, in terms of groundwater, we've already identified Bridgewater, New Hampton, and Plymouth.
Yeah, my understanding of the regional notification process is that will, in effect, be inviting these neighboring communities to send a representative or someone interested party to attend the public meeting. Is, is that really what we're doing here?
That, that is part of the process in the RSA. Once we determine that there is regional impact, and once we determine which municipalities may potentially be impacted, they will receive notification as to when the public hearing is, and they do have, they will be invited to offer any input on the project if they wish to do so. And that can be at the public hearing, or it can be in writing.
And it also means that we, we notify the RPC.
Yes. Lakes Region Planning Commission.
As well, yeah. In our case, the Lakes Region Planning Commission.
Yes.
In our motion, when we make one, I don't want to get too precise, so to speak. I mean, we're talking about Holness, Plymouth, Bridgewater, and New Hampton. What I was going to say is, do we want to put a radius from the proposed site? We could easy enough.
Well, I, I don't know, because-
I, I, I would, I'm going to say I'd rather not, because that is pretty defining, but we know that Holness, Plymouth, Bridgewater, and New Hampton are close enough-
Yes.
-to be told of this project.
I would say those would be the four. The notification go, just gets addressed to the, to the town of Plymouth, Holness, et cetera. So whether it were a small radius or a large radius, still the same notification would go, yeah.
Correct.
Do I hear a motion concerning municipalities?
I'll make a motion that the municipalities of Bridgewater, New Hampton, Plymouth, and Holness will be notified of the regional impact in addition to the Lakes Region Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Martine Badger.
Aye.
Charlie Bazelo.
Aye.
Alan Silly.
Aye.
Dave Toth says aye.
Okay. So, yeah, okay, go ahead, David.
You were going to say something, Martine?
No.
As required by the RSA, the relevant RSA's, within five business days following this meeting, the affected municipalities and the Lakes Region Planning Commission will be notified of this decision by certified mail. Each municipality and the planning commission will also receive a copy of the minutes of this meeting, and one copy of the application and plan at the applicant's expense.
David, can I take just a moment at this point to introduce our other guest here? Daniel Lutetti is with us. He is with the engineering group that is the agent representing both Center State LLC, the owner of the property, and Brendan Hiltz, who is the potential project person. He is with us today.
I'm sorry I was so rude in the beginning, I should have introduced you right away, but-
No worries. I tried to fly under the radar.
But it's certainly relevant at this point in the meeting, because we have a question for you. We need to inform you that you have the right to have the case heard by a full board of five members. Now, we currently only have four members on the board, and, so at this, at this point, we need to know what your desires are as to how you would like to proceed.
It's, my understanding is that the hearing would be November 12, and that's what you're wondering, if we prefer the current board in front of me, or a full board of five?
Correct.
We would like to proceed with the board as is, board of four would be sufficient.
Okay.
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 Thank you.
Okay, so now we can proceed to the next step, which is the acceptance of the application. We need to determine whether the application is complete, and that sufficient information has been provided to enable us to render a decision after the public hearing. For any, anyone who may be listening to this meeting- For any, any, anyone who may be listening to this meeting. The special exception is being requested because the town zoning ordinance does not list gravel pit or quarry as a permitted use in the rural residential zone. All of the listed abutters were notified by certified mail. And all receipt cards were returned, the notice was published in the Laconia Daily Sun on September 23rd, 2020, the notice was also posted at the post office, the town hall and on the town website. So the question before us is, do we consider the application complete? Or incomplete?
I just need to share just a minute here. There, do have the application on the screen if there are any questions. I can scroll through it. My, my opinion. What we're dealing with right now, I think, is just, we're not going into the details of the, of the proposal. We're not discussing the merits of the proposal, or the merits, or the, or the length of any response. Do we have all the basic information here that we need to move this application forward to the next step, the hearing? In my opinion, I think we do. The abutters are listed, the ownership of the property is listed. The, one of the key thing, the, there are two letters of agent authorization that are signed by the owner of the property and the other person that the engineers are representing. The applicant has also submitted answers to the, to the, their answers to the criteria that we would use.
It seems to me there's a lot of information, I would, comes to mind of what buildings might be anticipated, what percentage of the lot would be occupied. There was, you know, talk of access roads, but I didn't, I really didn't see any detailed sketch or, or map of what that proposal is. Now, ma- maybe, you know, that's stuff that will come out in the public hearing. But I, I thought for the type of application that this is. We really need to have, I certainly feel I need to have additional information as a, more precisely how this is going to be built on the property and, and what the, the intended impact is in terms of dimensional requirements.
I think that would all come out in the public hearing. That's generally where the applicant will explain the project. And answer questions, the zoning board has the opportunity to ask, to ask questions, the applicant responds to those questions. The abutters all have opportunity to pose questions or express opinions or express concerns. All of that is generally part of the public hearing piece. The accepting of the application is complete is generally the step before this is moved to the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, but certainly I'll be looking forward in the public hearing to, you know, getting some definitive description of, of those requirements.
I know I have, I will, I have a lot of questions, as probably all of you will too.
Yes, and I, I can agree with that. We, we would love to have more detailed drawings and whatnot. But at this stage, it's not really a requirement for us to move this forward. Obviously, for a public hearing, one would assume the applicant would bring forth those documents to present with their case.
Okay, we'll leave that to them.
Yeah, one, one thing I think we also need to remember is that what are, the question that we are going to have to debate and answer is, is a gravel pit or quarry an acceptable use for this particular piece of land? So we're looking at whether it is an appropriate use for the land. We're not, we won't, even after we go through our public hearing, and if we approve the special exception, this whole project does not, is not finished at that point, there will be another whole planning board process after this with a great deal of detail also.
Do I hear a motion to accept the application as complete?
I will make that motion.
I will second it.
Discussion.
Well, yes, I do have.
Go ahead, Marty.
What I would like the applicant to do between now and the public hearing is on the plot plan that you supply. If you could, I know you've got tax map and lot numbers there on the map of the abutters. If you could put in the appropriate names for those abutters also, so that we have a better, an easier time in identifying the different parts of property. And if, and if you can make sure it corresponds also to the list of abutters that's in your application.
Can do, thank you.
Yeah, and I think I will make that as an amendment to the motion to add, or, yeah, an amendment to the motion to add all the names of all the property owners to all the abutting properties.
Second amendment?
Discussion. Okay, all those in, in favor. Or I will, excuse me, I will take a roll call vote, Martine Badger.
Aye.
Charlie Bazilo.
Aye.
Alan Silly.
Aye.
Dave Toes says aye.
Oh, one other, one other thing I just noticed. Mr. Lucetti, we did discover that two of their properties also have, have easements on. Tax map lot 5-3-3 owned by the Gliddons. And property 5-3-1, which is in New England Forestry. Both of those, the Squam Lakes Conservation Society has easements on both of those lots. So that should be indicated also. And we'll make sure they're, we'll make sure they're notified. Actually, one, one of them has already been in contact with us.
Okay, then. So case 2020-1 Center State LLC. Application for a special exception is continued to November 12th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Electronically through Zoom connection, which will be posted on the Ashland Town website on, on the calendar.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other business?
I don't, I will get the Zoom, the Zoom connection information right away, so that it goes right out with the minutes.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marty.
Excellent.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Lucetti?
Not so much a question, but just a statement, and you kind of covered it at the end.
Okay.
I know there is a lot of concern of the magnitude of the project, which we don't have completed at this point yet. It's, we're strictly looking for the use of the gravel pit on this parcel. The project itself will be qualifying for NHDES alteration train permit. So the operational practices must coincide with their regulations as well as RSA 155. So that I know there, obviously, we just talked about, there's gonna be a lot of questions to the magnitude, the orientation. All of those will be really fleshed out in the state level permitting process, which we have not got to yet, because we don't even have the authorization for that, for this use on the property. So just saying it as a kind of a, not a warning, but the answers are probably going to be fairly generic to, that they'll be in line with the state regulations and the, obviously, the local regulations. But a, a specific size footprint, all those things, we don't have confirmed yet, or designed yet to that point.
Okay, noted, thank you.
That's it, I mean, if I can supply you with the updated plan, that's all that's needed from myself. With the owner information, owner names and easements.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
I don't have any other questions.
None here.
Charlie?
No.
No? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.